Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, June 10, 2019 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have you all here with us this evening. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got some volunteers who are going to lead us here. Some students are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So why don't you guys go ahead and kick us off?
Get us started. There's the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Nice job. Why don't you give us your names, Sue. You want to come on up and tell us who you were? Come on up and press the button, make it green, and then tell us your names.
Okay, so hi, I'm Kaylin Murphy.
I'm Claire Weatherly.
And we're from TJ, the Commonwealth City. And yeah.
All right, well, we're going to hear from you guys a little bit later, I think. You fill out a speaker slip. Give you some pins for helping start the Pledge of Allegiance, all right? Here's one for you. How about you? All right, nice work. There was a third. Did she come up? Do you want to pin? All right, now you're coming up, aren't you? All right, and there Coach, too? All right. Let's call roll if we can, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z is absent. Mayor Charter.
Dick today. Wish him --
Mayor Charter?
Yeah, we wish him to feel better, hopefully sent.
And Mayor Charter?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. So we have a proclamation we'd like to give tonight, and Ms. Hardy will do the honors. Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation declaring June 2019 as LGBTQ Pride Month and the Stonewall Rebellion Month. Whereas the City Council of the City of Falls Church recognizes that the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all people is the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace, and whereas June is celebrated as LGBTQ Pride Month nationwide, and whereas the City of Falls Church is proud of the meaningful, long-lasting impacts the LGBTQ community has made and the contributions it has brought to the city's rich and diverse culture, and whereas the City of Falls Church remains committed to treating all people with fairness and respect and to creating a community where everyone can live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender identity or sexual orientation, whereas the Stonewall Rebellion of June 1969 is considered the birth of the modern gay and lesbian rights movement, and whereas the 50th anniversary of events at Stonewall Inn will be marked on June 28, 2019, and whereas the commemoration of these events underscores our determination to support, preserve, and advance the civil rights guaranteed for all.
Now, therefore, I, David Carter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ Pride and Stonewall Rebellion Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all residents to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this matter or receive this proclamation? Mr. Benton? Absolutely. We'd be delighted to have you.
I'm Nick Benton, 400 James Court, founder and editor of the Falls Church News Press, and I appreciate this proclamation that's given out every year now in recent years. June 1969 really was an extraordinary time. The Stonewall Rebellion that took place then, uprising, riot, whatever you want to call it, it was real. And it did set in motion the organizing effort that led to the foundation of a whole group of organizations advocating for LGBT rights, for civil rights more generally. I wasn't there. I was out in San Francisco. I was a gay rights activist in the San Francisco Bay Area at the same time, and we found out about it just a few months later. Didn't automatically make national headlines then, but it was a very significant time. This is the 50th anniversary this year, and we are going to have an event in Falls Church on Sunday, the 23rd of June. It's about two weeks off at the Falls Church Episcopal Church, and the Falls Church News Press is co-hosting it with the Social Justice Committee of the Tinner Hill Foundation and all the resources that they hope to bring to get the community out to attend this event. It's happening at the Falls Church Episcopal for a significant reason, and that is that that church, that great historic church right in the center of our city, became a flashpoint for a struggle on this issue a number of years ago. And the entire congregation at that time voted to basically leave the Episcopal Church in protest of the Episcopal Church's support for the election of an openly gay bishop to the national church. And over a years-long battle, the rightful possessors, the Diocese of Virginia, of the Falls Church Episcopal Church prevailed. And so the congregation that remained in place that whole time with the help of the Presbyterian Church to worship every week across the street, they got back into their church, and it is now a really thriving church and a very progressive church, and it helps to set the tone for the entire community that makes it so much more likely that things like this are going to happen, so these kinds of celebrations. So that's why we're having it there. There will be two people there who are actually at the Stonewall Uprising, okay? One is Don Davenport. He's a member, he's on the Board of the LGBT Democrats of Virginia. He's based down in Richmond, but he's writing a book, and he's very articulate, and he can describe exactly what happened that night. There's another who's a resident of Falls Church, actually, who was also there, Tony Giese. He will be at this meeting along with Danica Rome, who's a state delegate, first one in Virginia to be elected as a transgender person, and she's a very, very dynamic speaker, and she's up for reelection for the first time this year, and she will be there, too. So I invite you all to come. I invite you to present your proclamation again there. We'd love to have you, and we're going to have a little reception afterwards up at Clarence Don's, too. So we'll get a little more of an atmosphere of a piano bar and, you know, a social atmosphere. At any rate, thank you so much for this and on behalf of the entire movement and the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. Why don't we come forward and get a picture, and we'll get a proclamation for the event as well?
What would you do with a picture?
I don't know what we could put that picture.
I'll be fine. Yes, you can take the picture.
I think we're going to talk about.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those comments. Mr. Benton, I wanted to propose kind of a follow-on motion to our proclamation. I think while this is not the first year we've declared LGBT Month in the Falls Church, I think it would be the first time that we'd be able to fly a flag outside City Hall. I do think that having a flag outside the heart of the city shows that we're allies to the cause, and so I wanted to propose a motion that council can vote on. I move that council authorize and direct the city manager and his staff to fly the LGBTQ plus pride flag in front of City Hall during the month of June to reflect the city's spirit of inclusion and to honor LGBTQ Pride Month in the City of Falls Church as we just proclaimed tonight.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Anyone like to say anything or vote? All right, Madam Clerk, let's have it.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
All right, well, you'll be seeing the flag up shortly. Okay, unless there's any other discussion, let's move on. We've got to collapse. That's good. To oaths of office, are there any oaths of office to administer tonight, Madam Clerk?
I believe so.
All right.
I know two people are here. Is anyone else here? Okay. If you want to come forward, we can do them all at one time. All right, what's your name?
Andrew Sackler.
If you all raise your right hand and then just respond at the end, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of your Board or Commission according to the best of your abilities to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, while they're doing that, who went to the grand opening of the new park in the downtown area? Anybody come out to that this evening? That was a really nice event. We've got a new park in our downtown. Ms. Hardy spent a lot of time working on that in particular, as did Jim Snyder and Phil Duncan and a few other folks as well, but we're going to, yeah. Why don't you guys come forward? We'll get a photo and also give you some pins if you can. Let's move on to our next item on the agenda, which is summary of written comments. Madam Clerk?
Sam Butler of 132 Spring Court wrote to ask for action on climate change being planned, beginning with planning for fewer motor vehicles at new developments in the city. Anna and Matt Dorkin provided comments for the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan update. Scott Oppenheim asked why more restaurant options weren't available in the city, and that's all of them.
All right, that's great. So we're now going to move on to the receipt of public comment. That's for people here in person who'd like to speak, and I imagine we've got a few. I know we have a few because I'm holding the cards in my hand. But anyone who hasn't filled out a card, you're welcome to do so. I think they're in the back of the room. They look like this. If you'll fill out the card and hand to the clerk, she'll hand them to me, and I'll call you forward. When you do get up to the microphone, if you could state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes so that we can keep our meeting going tonight. You can either speak now, or you can speak when the item that you're here for is called. It's up to you. So I'm going to call our first speaker, and we'll keep moving. Isabel Davis. Followed by Joe Seaver. You're a celebrity. I like it. I like those shirts, too.
Thank you. So my name is Isabel Davis. I live on 301 North Van Buren Street, and I'm a junior at George Mason High School. I'm here today to ask you to amend the exotic animal laws in Falls Church City. I strongly support the proposed amendment to allow hedgehogs, chinchillas, hermit crabs, turtles, and tortoises. All of the pets on the list to be added are domesticated and commonly kept as pets. They are permitted in most of the jurisdictions around us, and they should be permitted here. For a few years now, I have been fighting to amend the city's law because the current law is overly restrictive and arbitrary. No Virginia city or county in our area has laws that are as restrictive as Falls Church City, and the reasons given to support the current restrictions don't justify them. The law is arbitrary because there are no valid reasons to permit the pets we currently allow, like cats, dogs, ferrets, and non-venomous snakes, but not to permit hedgehogs, chinchillas, hermit crabs, turtles, and tortoises. I think you probably know that many of our residents have these pets currently. That is not because people want to disobey the law. It is because unless they actually read the city code, they would have no way of suspecting that a pet like a turtle, or hedgehog, or hermit crab would be outlawed in our city. They are cute and just as harmless as all the pets that are allowed. That's what I mean by arbitrary. Some concerns have been brought up regarding the legalization of these pets. Some of these pets are nocturnal, some require heating, some need to live in pairs, some can carry zoonotic diseases, some pet breeders are irresponsible, and sometimes people who keep pets mistreat them. But this does not make these pets any different than the pets that are already permitted in the city. Hamsters, mice, and rats are nocturnal, corn snakes require heating, rats and guinea pigs require companionship. Nearly all pets can carry a small risk for disease such as salmonella. But just like the pets we already permit, this risk can be minimized easily by practicing basic hygiene and keeping the pet healthy. And of course, all pets can be marketed irresponsibly and mistreated. We hear about these stories on the news when they happen, but these are the exceptions. Most people treat the animals in their care well because most people who keep pets bond with them and care for them. Fairfax County and Arlington County both currently permit these pets. Both counties went through an extensive process of acquiring the opinions of experts and listening to the opinions of members of the public. For example, the Fairfax County Health Department had no objections to legalizing these pets based on information they had received from the CDC and exotic veterinarians on the issue of zoonotic diseases. In addition, after reaching out to Arlington County and Loudoun County, where these pets have been permitted for a long time, the staff of Fairfax County concluded that abandonment would not be an issue. Arlington has never received complaints of these animals at large and has only received two hedgehogs in its animal shelters since 2013. Loudoun County gets very few hedgehogs or chinchillas in their shelters, and when they do, they are adopted out almost immediately. So there really is no good evidence that any of the exotic pets that may be legalized today will harm the community or not make good pets. I believe that the City Council should make the decision, the trusted citizens should make responsible decisions concerning pet ownership, and give them the freedom to choose the pets that are right for them. We should make these little animals at home in our little city. Thank you for considering the amendment.
All right, thank you. Very articulate and a great organizer. I don't know if I could use a campaign manager like you coming up here. So, all right, our next speaker is Joe Seaver. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, honey. Did I mispronounce your name? Sevier?
Doesn't matter. I really responded.
Okay. Sorry.
Hi there. My name is Joe Sevier. I am a rising senior at-large class officer at George Mason High School. Today, you will be considering legalizing hedgehogs and chinchillas in Falls Church City. I strongly encourage you to making these animals legal because currently the law is too restrictive. I know these pets can make wonderful companions for the right owners, and I fully support their legalization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice job. All right, our next group, we've got three people, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Weatherly, and Ms. Barth. Do you guys want to come forward? All right. I got three names here. There's only two of you coming.
Yeah, one of us isn't actually here. We thought she was going to be here, though.
Okay, well, that's fine. Well, we'll hear you all out then.
Well, I'm Claire Weatherly, and I live at 305 Bucks Denrow.
And I'm Kaylin Murphy, and I live at 128 North Fairfax Street. So we're a group of fifth grade students, rising sixth graders at TJ.
So we're doing an exhibition, and during exhibition, you pick a topic that is important to you. We chose equal pay because in the US, women get paid about 80 cents on average to a man's dollar. This is breaking the law because in 1963, John F. Kennedy signed the Equal Pay Act. This act said that all people must be paid the same no matter what gender or race. Unfortunately, this law has not been carried out among most businesses. We all care about this subject because even though this doesn't directly affect us now, it will in the future, and we want to know that we are being paid the same as our male colleagues for doing the same work.
That is why we came up this idea for our action piece. We want all companies in Falls Church City to enforce equal pay among their workers by using a salary scale. A salary scale ensures equal pay because it pays on how many years of experience you have. Our idea is once they did, they would hang up a piece of paper in a visible location saying that they pay their workers equally. We are hoping people will be persuaded to buy from companies that have equal pay. It will also provide publicity for the companies, and maybe other communities will promote and implement this idea. Thanks so much for your time today, and we hope you take our idea into consideration.
Thank you all. That's a great idea. Thanks for coming forward. All right, our next speaker is Helen Morris, followed by Mr. Webb. It's on those t-shirts, by the way. Those are really cool.
Yeah, they're nice, aren't they? I wore my turtle socks, too.
I like it.
To support legalization. Hello, City Council members. My name is Helen Morris, and I live at 224 Forest Drive. I'm the current junior class treasurer at George Mason High School, and I will be the vice president of the senior class next year. I'm here to support Isabel Davis in her efforts to legalize hedgehogs, chinchillas, turtles, tortoises, and hermit crabs in the City of Falls Church because I agree with the aforementioned statements of Isabel's and Joe's that the current laws are too restrictive and should be changed so as to give people the freedom to have more of the pets they would like to own. I'd like to start by speaking to the honesty and integrity that Isabel has shown by bringing this law, this law change, to you all instead of just going to the next county over and buying a hedgehog and not telling anyone about it.
We've heard of that.
I think it's very respectable that she took the initiative to actually change this law and put all the time, work, and effort that she has over many years, and I think it's very admirable and that that should also be taken into consideration when you do make your decision. I'd like to speak to the fact that according to a friend, a colleague of my father's, who is the senior livestock manager at the World Bank, hedgehogs do not carry any diseases that small rodents, such as hamsters and gerbils, do not. And I'd like to also testify to the fact that I have handled wild hedgehogs, and I promise that I have never contracted salmonella in my life. Also, when I was a young child and I lived in another country where tortoises are legal as pets, I owned tortoises for two years, and in fact, one of them died from disease. But I can testify that I never contracted disease because when the correct precautions are taken, such as washing your hands and keeping said pets out of your home environment such as kitchens or bathrooms, the risk for the spreading of disease greatly diminishes. So that's all I'd like to say tonight. Thank you for your time, and please consider legalizing all the small pets aforementioned. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nice job. All right, our last speaker, at least at the present, is Lawrence Webb. Mr. Webb?
Thank you very much, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a moment to again thank you all for the LGBT Month proclamation that you all just presented. It is very important that we, as a community, recognize the work that LGBT Americans have put forward to become an active and participating part of our country, our community, and also for me personally, little over 10 years ago now, my neighbors and this community elected me to office as being the first openly gay person of color, African-American, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That says a lot for this community taking a leap of faith of doing something like that that most folks would potentially not necessarily do, but again, I grew up in a part of the state where even today, it's still very, much so a taboo issue of being gay, and also being African-American and gay within our community is a very, still sensitive issue within families and friends groups. But here in Falls Church, being a community of progressive folks, giving me the opportunity to serve this community, giving me the opportunity to be able to speak to other folks, not only here in the Commonwealth, but folks in other locations because of that one little thing that I hope to not continually be the only person of color elected that is openly gay, but giving other opportunities, giving other gay Americans, African-American men and women, the opportunity that your sexuality does not dictate who you are or what you can do. And my friends here in the community, my neighbors, saw that opportunity and took advantage of that. I want to again thank you all for what you all have done and continue to do to serve the community. Thank Mr. Benton for taking the opportunity to host his event. I'm going to be out of town on vacation, a much-needed vacation, mind you, but I would have been taking part in Mr. Benton's event because I tried to change my flight, but it was a little bit more difficult than I thought it was going to be. But I thank him for taking the opportunity to do these different things and other businesses in our community that have taken up the mantle of supporting the LGBT community here in the City of Falls Church and in the region. Again, thank you all very much for the proclamation and the continued hard work that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work you've done. Thank you for your leadership in our community, so it's greatly appreciated. All right, now unless there are any other speakers at this time, we are going to move on with the agenda. And next on the agenda is the annual report of the Economic Development Authority and its chair, Bob Young. Bob, welcome.
Good plan. You're all familiar with the flower baskets and the lights on Broad Street. Those were funded again, and they were planted just this last week. We plan this year to expand the lights up Broad Street, another block, maybe two, as well as the flowers next year being expanded.
Repeat that again. You're trying to get an extra block or two on the --
Correct.
Okay.
We're going to try to do one to two blocks a year, moving further up Broad Street. It's a lot more complicated than one thinks, but --
I've noticed.
-- we're trying.
Same LED lights with different colors?
One of our major projects was funding Walter Phillips to do a complete inventory of West Broad from north and south Washington up to the 800 to West Street. The idea there is to understand what is in place in the way of streetscape and street furnishings and so on. They went so far as to map all of the sidewalks or lack of sidewalks, overhead utility lines, trip hazards, and things like that. It is our plan this year to quantify the cost of redoing that streetscape and bringing it up to what we think will be a great standard and getting that into future CIPs because that will, of course, be in the hundreds of thousands. We had quite a hand in reviewing the West End project and the new high school, funded the creation of 25 new parking places over on Park and Maple. It was hard to get that done, but with the cooperation of Public Utility, we found -- or Public -- Public --
Public Works.
Yes, Public Works. And also created a new parking map, which is being taken around town. As you all know from the festivities a few minutes ago, we were able to finally fund and execute a downsized downtown park, which we think will be very successful. It's important that I note that Jim Snyder and Becky just put in huge numbers of hours and continue to do so. We're not done. We have other things to get completed. and continue to do so. We're not done. We have other things to get completed, but you all saw today, I think it's really going to be a major attraction in the downtown. In coincidence with that, Mr. Oshinsky has agreed to close the alleyway. That should be done in the next week or so, and basically, the idea is to see how it goes for a year. We're not going to put money into that space, but see how it gets used or not used.
They're going to put a new curb there.
Yes, the plan is to put in a new curb. That's in the public right of way, so we don't need any, and not very expensive. It can be done by city staff. And then we'll just see how it goes. The park is being programmed for at least the next several months by Councilmember Hardy and Eric Pelton, our vice chairman. There's a lot going on, and we're looking forward to seeing the park used quite a lot. We also funded a part-time park coordinator, who we hope will be on board in the next few weeks, and we'll see how that goes again over the remainder of this year and see whether that can turn into something bigger next year. That'll depend in part on City Council. Brian Williams led a year-long effort to fund a video promoting the city, which we want to get up on the website, you know, put it online, social media and so on. It's really quite excellent. It's just about done. We think it'll be out in the next week or two or maybe three. We strongly support, haven't succeeded yet, crosswalks tuned from the Kaiser Garage in George Mason Square for additional parking. You all see the sidewalk going in on Park Avenue, which is something that we pushed very hard, and with Brian Williams' help. That's actually almost done. It's kind of amazing. Much-needed thing. Now, what are we going to do next year? We'll be, as I mentioned earlier, costing out the West Broad project. We are going to fund a very significant parking study in the city to ascertain the facts on the ground. Is there enough parking or not? Is the parking in the right place or not, cross easements, and a whole series of things. Ed Salzberg, who I might note has been on the EDA for almost 40 years, 1981, and he's right in there pitching with lots of good ideas. We plan to fund and execute a wayfinding study. That would involve a plan eventually for signs all over the city, starting with gateway signs and parking signs, but we want to fund the first part of that. There'll be a lot of public outreach. We think that's very important, to see where people think signs ought to be and what they ought to look like. Ultimately, that'll be up to the City Council to make those final decisions, but we want to be able to present you with a package that's been well-vetted by the community. The EDA is going to, in the next couple of months, take up the issue of affordable housing and whether, you know, try to answer the question whether or not the EDA can and should have a role in helping with affordable housing, particularly how that relates to promotion of business and having healthy businesses. Some final notes. We have three student members who are fully engaged, along with really a group of folks who are fully engaged and working very hard. You've heard me mention the different names. Everybody is engaged, from the 40 years to Jim Coyle, who's been with us for just a couple of months. I want to thank Councilmember Hardy and Councilmember Duncan for them coming to virtually every one of our meetings, participating and helping out. And finally, I guess I want to warn you a bit. We'll be coming back to council with requests for funding of ideas that we think are good ones. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the fine work you all are doing. I think it's one of the finest EDAs that I've seen. You've got a great...
Thank you.
... Mr. Duncan, just...
Thank you, if I might, on behalf of council's Economic Development Committee. Ms. Hardy and I thank you for all the efforts that you have undertaken and catalogued. Here you all are thought leaders for economic development and action leaders, too, doing the hard work. The big projects, you know, naturally get a lot of publicity and discussion, but so much of what you and the staff, Becky Whitman, Jim Snyder, are doing is the, you know, three yards and a cloud of dust stuff, which really, you know, keeps the wheels turning day in and day out on small and medium-sized businesses that are, you know, very vital to not only the economic picture here in the city, but also vital to our sense of community and, you know, providing us with options to shop and dine and entertain that keep us here in the city and not sitting in traffic at Mosaic or Tysons. So I want to thank you all for all the work that you do that is not necessarily headline-grabbing, but is very important and that generations of Falls Churchers to come will benefit from. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just say that, as a result of a rather activist group, we take up a huge amount of staff's time. Jim and Becky, you know, I'm emailing with them virtually every day, often a dozen times a day. So I hope you all take that into account. We'll be getting, I guess, a part-time person there, but it's a lot of time and effort on staff's part.
Right. I did just want to ask, the net fiscal impact model, Becky will know this, is about due to be updated. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we should be able to provide updated information about the net revenue that is thrown off by the mixed-use projects that we've built in the last 15 to 17 years. Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, we'll listen, Bob. Thank you so much again. Yes?
Before Bob leaves, I did have a question about the parking study because I've been around long enough to have seen parking studies come and go and the same problems continue to exist, and they really boil down to a private property rights view from business owners that rent, who say, "We're paying rent for X number of spaces," and property owners say the same thing. So my question is, how can the study take account of that, and will it help us find a way around? That's number one. Number two, there are studies indicating that parking overall absorbs a lot of real estate that could be more efficiently used, and I'm wondering how we're going to address both of those issues in the parking study and if we will. You don't need to answer. It's not a trick question tonight, but I'm just curious about would be great to have a success this time around on that topic.
Well, the, to answer your question, we don't have those answers. That's why we're going to fund this study. We are very cognizant. Again, Councilmember Hardy's been working very hard on parking in the downtown for many, many months. There are many hypotheses around that there's enough parking, but it's in the wrong place or it's being used wrongly. We have to take into account what might happen over the next decade with respect to parking, and we've all, you know, we all know about that. I guess the answer is, we don't know the answers to those questions, but we're pretty determined to have a study that will put facts on the table and propose things like new technology that's out there, that we can be informed about, that we don't know much about now, to try to solve these problems, perhaps encouraging cross easements between owners. We, certainly I, in my business, understand people's demand for parking. We're just going to have to see where the facts fall. But it's not our intention to fund another study that goes up on the shelf. Not interested in that.
All right.
Mayor, if I could just add, having dipped my toes a bit in this tricky area of parking. So two things that I'll concur with Mr. Young said. I think the study, what's really important about this is not only getting the facts and the data of how much parking we actually have, because I think there's a common misbelief in the community that we don't have enough parking, and someone with more expertise than me should actually go out and measure that. So not only measure what current usage, but also project what parking demand is in the future. And then there are good examples of shared parking succeeding in the city. So I know Northside Social was identified last summer as kind of causing a lot of parking pain points, but they've actually negotiated a really good shared parking arrangement with the condos across the street. And there's other examples of shared parking that actually happens in other cities where it works well. And so one thing that's identified in the scope of work is to bring those best practices to Falls Church so that we can unlock a lot of the parking. Because when you look at an aerial map of Falls Church, there's a lot of asphalt parking in there. A lot of it's private, and we just need to figure out how we can kind of foster that cooperation across the community, and I think that there's places that do it well. So we should learn from them.
All right, thank you much. Unless there's any other comments, we thank you again, and let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? Snyder?
It's not really a request, but I just had a comment about our earlier action regarding civil rights. When I ran for the state legislature in 2001, and the first debate was in the high school, and the first question in the high school was, "What do you think about gay marriage?" And I said, "It's fine with me." My Democratic opponent actually thought it was a terrible idea. So in any event, things have changed in the right direction, and I'm honored and I appreciate the initiative that's shown by our members of City Council and our editor and others to recognize the importance of civil rights for everyone. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments or Ms. Hardy?
I had a request. So now that we've had Bike Share successfully roll out, two requests related, could we get some sort of monthly update on how Bike Share usage is going? It doesn't have to be monthly, but I think the reports come in from Capital Bike Share monthly. I think everyone's pretty curious now that we've launched it, how it's going and whether that is shifting demand to bikes and off of other modes. And then the follow-on is that we talked about scooters, and I know this is something that we're going to have to address before the end of the year, so perhaps an upcoming work session topic would be good, because I think the Planning Commission's actually doing something with scooters fairly soon. I don't know if that should be a joint discussion with council, because I know there's a lot of people up here interested as well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duncan.
Just to add to that, I noticed on social media over the weekend, there was somebody who was trying to ride Bike Share back from West Falls Church, having been downtown. Worked fine on the way in, but apparently on the way out, the West Falls Church station was down. It was, you know, disconnected or whatever. She was able to take the bus home, but it occurred to me that I don't think I ever asked during the process, we were considering it, you know, what is their downage ratio? I mean, when the technology just doesn't work and you can't actually unlock. So when we get usage data, maybe also make sure we get downage data. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything else, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Just a few things to report. On Wednesday, June 12th, at 7:00 PM, we'll have our Board and Commissions meeting for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. All of the public is invited to that. There'll be a presentation of the revised special exception entitlement by the EYAP and Hoffman Regency Center's team. This is relating to the 10 acres immediately adjacent to the new high school at George Mason High School. So again, that's June 12th, 7:00 PM. We're gathering public comment on that special exception application. We'll have a work session with the City Council at your first meeting in July, and we have a scheduled date for council consideration and action on that special exception entitlement on July, on Monday, July 8th. And just as one thing I'll just say about this, as we go through the process, this is for the high-level entitlements and concept plan for this development. There'll be another round of the special exception site plan, which will also have opportunities for public engagement and comment, and that'll be a much more detailed review of the proposed development. With respect to the City Hall project, I just want to note that the next regular meeting of the City Council is scheduled to be in our new council chambers, so we're scheduling a ribbon cutting before your meeting on June 24th, and we'll get publicity out on that event, but we're looking forward to moving in to the new council chambers. Our work session next week will be in this room, and it'll be our last meeting in this room, and we'll thank the Wreckin' Park staff for their hospitality during what has been a good stay here, but we're looking forward to getting our meetings back into City Hall. Those are the two things I wanted to report on, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions if there?
Thank you. Also, on Wednesday at 5:00, for those folks who are in the room who might care about what's happening down on the West End, the Founders Row, Mill Creek folks are having their neighborhood meeting at the construction site, and I think you mentioned, Mr. Manager, that somebody from our staff would be there to listen and provide any input from the city side of what they have to say.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so 5:00 Wednesday at the Founders Row, Construction Trailer. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have stated that. That's at Mary Ellen Henderson in the Cafeteria. So again, Wednesday, June 12th, 7:00 PM, at Mary Ellen Henderson.
All right, thank you. Unless there are any other comments, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Plurk, will you call the first item, please?
TO 1906 is an ordinance to amend ordinance 1994 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2019 for the General Fund and the Capital Improvements Program Fund.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. This is the second reading of the final budget amendment for the current fiscal year, sparing some details. I'll just give a quick overview. We are requesting $750,000 in new appropriation for multiple projects, including the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, the City Hall renovation, and partial funding for relocation of the Leaf Mulch Shelter at Property Yard. This ordinance also requests reprogramming of funds between projects and in the Special Transportation Fund, a little over $100,000, $126,000. And that concludes my report. This item, there are no changes to this item since the last first hearing and has been advertised as requested, but I'm available for questions if you have any.
All right. Well, we've had the report. Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Snyder?
I have a question. To what extent do these reprogrammings represent an increase in the City Hall budget overall for the renovations?
So the project requests a total of $750,000. $350,000 is interest and revenue from the 2018 bond issuance, and $400,000 from underspending in the current fiscal year, savings from vacancies and jail costs, and information technology personnel savings due to vacancies. And the total project, the construction has been $13.3 million, so the $700,000 brings it to $14 million for construction costs.
So would it be possible to have sort of an historic view of the cost of this project as it's gone along? It seems to me that's a higher amount than we originally budgeted for. Is that right, city manager, or not?
So the budget that was approved by the City Council was the $13.3 million that our CFO just mentioned, and so there's been one budget amendment to date, and that is this one of $750,000. The project is not yet complete, unfortunately, and so we will need to come back to council with a final reconciliation for this project. We anticipate we'll do that either later this summer or early fall at the latest. And there are a number of issues that we'll need to work out with the construction company. And we'll give the council a full report on that, and those will all be public numbers. But to date, what has been approved is that initial budget of $13.3 million, and now we're asking for $750,000, and that is for change orders that really have already been approved and processed. And so that's where we are at the moment.
Can you give me some examples of what those change orders are, and can we have a readout of them at this point? Because that's real money, and I'm sure people are going to want to know, you know, why and what are the circumstances. It may be entirely reasonable, but I am interested in more of a, more background on this.
Well, the largest one is, was for the contract approval that the council granted in the amount of $400,000 to do the low voltage and the voice and data network conduit inputs in the, in the new building. The other change orders are for a whole host of sort of smaller changes. You know, we needed to move a wall or, you know, other things that came up in the construction with, you know, a renovation of an older building.
I think it also pays for extended stay in the temporary location. And I think it also pays for extended stay in the temporary location that we had come to council for.
That's correct.
Needless to say, to the extent that these are cause of why the contractor will be very interested in pursuing that. So thanks much.
Yes, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So in terms of the contractual disagreements that we have with the contracting company, knowing that there's going to be a final reconciliation, what is, what's the maximum downside for the city? I mean, what is, what do we expect that range to be in terms of what's already been expended?
Well, we're going to negotiate very hard for, on the city's behalf, so I don't think it would be prudent for me to put a number like that out. We're working very hard to minimize that, and I think we've got very good arguments for that. We've tried to manage this project very closely. We recognize every minute of the day that this is the public's money that we're spending for this building, and so we guard it very carefully. But it would not be appropriate for me to put a number out at this point.
What's the timing of the reconciliation? When we could expect that?
Well, there, you know, we need to work through the issues, and I think it will take as long as it needs to take. Probably the contractor would wish probably that it go faster. But just to summarize kind of what the essence of the issue will be, is that clearly the project was late. And so the question is, why was the project late? And there are disagreements about that, and that really is what has to be worked through. To the extent that we've requested changes and they affected the critical path for the project, then under the contract, those are charges that the owner is liable for. To the extent that the project was delayed through, you know, through the construction manager's decision, or for whatever reasons that are their responsibility, then the city has no liability for those delays. And in fact, the city has compensation for those delays. That's the nature of the disagreement, and I don't want to opine on it right now, but that's what's being discussed.
Okay. And in terms of path towards resolution, are we just negotiating between parties now? Or have we reached some type of legal threshold where mediation, arbitration? What are the provisions in the contract?
Well, currently, we're just discussing with the contractor. And we would, I don't think we have, I mean, we could enter into mediation at some point if we wanted. It's not mandatory under the contract. But for now, we're, we've just, we're just getting all the claims and taking a look at them.
Okay. Final question. In terms of that resolution, if we weren't able to resolve it between parties outside of mediation, what's the timeframe where we have to begin mediation, and how long would that potentially take to resolve? Is there a timeframe contractually where we have to resolve that in mediation?
No. No. I mean, there's timeframes for when the contractor has to advise us of the claims, but there isn't an outside time on when things have to go to court or when there's a mediation.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'm going to...
Could I?
You can.
Thank you.
Whatever you're going to do.
Okay. Appreciate your sensitivity that this is the public's money that we're spending here. Just from the historical perspective, you know, when we talk about the high school, Peter often says, "We've been talking about building a new high school for 10 years." We've clearly been talking about building a new high school here for at least 20 years. I think the same may be true of city hall. For the occasion of the opening of the chambers and the official ceremony, could somebody on staff just root around and find out how long it is that we have been talking about doing city hall, and what the initial budgets for the city hall that at least somebody thought that we should build would have cost? I just think it might be helpful for people who, you know, have not been on the scene quite so long. And it might teach us some lessons about the next project that is not unlike city hall, which is the library. So I would appreciate it if staff could enlighten us on that and have that information out there. And maybe there's even some drawings of the very most original. I know that city hall was in full boil when Tarter and I came into office in 2012. So I'm sure the discussion goes back at least 10 years, if not more. And I'm quite sure that the budget was at least twice as big as it is going to end up, that we're going to be spending here. Thanks.
Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you. So on the note about kind of getting enlightened, I won't belabor the point. I think no one's really happy about any overage on any capital projects. I won't belabor that point. But looking forward, as we embark on a project that's going to be 10 times the size with the high school, let's make sure we actually talk about lessons learned from this one. Clearly, building a new high school will be pretty different than renovating an existing city hall, but I think we owe it to the public to figure out kind of what could be done better going forward, because for something that's going to be 10 times, a lot more things at risk. And so if we can document kind of lessons learned after we do this kind of final reconciliation, and make sure that the next project learns from it.
All right. Unless there are any other comments, I'm going to open this matter to the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter has closed the public. Do we have a motion?
Mayor moved to adopt TO-19-06.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Would you call the next item, please?
TO-19-07 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, Section 4-3 of the City Code of the City of Falls Church to allow certain animals to be kept as pets in the city.
All right. Mr. Shields?
Well, thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council. I'll give just an introduction, and I would also just note in the audience, we do have Officer Keenan, who is the city's animal warden and who has served the city for many years and has worked with these issues for very long. She is our subject matter expert on this, and we really thank her for her service and for her long-term dedication to the city. So just by way of introduction, the city council has received petitions to change our ordinance on exotic animals. Arlington County and Fairfax County both have amended their ordinances in the last two to three years. Fairfax County most recently with an amendment to its ordinance that occurred in January. The city council held a work session to discuss the petitions that were received and to hear some initial staff input. And just to summarize, which is a complex issue, the, what the, the staff's recommendation at the work session was that these, that the current ordinance was there for a purpose. It was actually drawn up in the 1990s as part of a regional effort to deal with what was a pretty significant problem at that time, which was a high level of exotic animals that had been purchased but then had been abandoned, had either been taken directly to animal shelters or had been let loose in the wild, and then, which prompted phone calls and a response by our animal warden, and ultimately being transported either to her home, to her own personal care, many of them, or to the shelter. And this was a region-wide problem. And so from that experience, generally, all the jurisdictions adopted ordinances that are similar to the cities. And they've all been amended to some degree over the years, but probably in the last three years in particular, there've been some really significant changes to the ordinances. I think probably in response to petitions like, very similar to the one that the city council, to the ones that the city council has received. And I will just note that we have met with Ms. Davis, and she is extremely well-prepared and argues her points very well, and you heard that tonight. And so our discussions with Ms. Davis really from the beginning has been, this is our view of the matter, and we've been consistent with that. And we're consistent with that tonight in terms of our recommendation to the city council to not make changes to the ordinance. But we've always also articulated the view that we're respectful of the public's ability to petition their elected government directly, which has occurred in this case, and that ultimately the city council will make its decisions. So that's a quick introduction of the item. Officer Keenan, if you want to make any comments, you're certainly welcome to do so as well. But, okay. Or Chief Gavin?
I think Wyatt has summed it up quite nicely. We are privileged here in the city to have Becky. She's the most tenured regional animal control officer in this region, and most jurisdictions come to us for Becky's wisdom. But ultimately, I know our recommendation is for no change. The last council meeting, I know that it was recommended that there be flexibility in the code. So in the package, you have on line 11, an alternative that was offered up to city council regarding the petitions change. And as you flip over to page, page 3, line 70, the alternative starts there. What's applicable to this in terms of the terms of wild or exotic animals and means of any exception, we have delineated that number one, dogs, cats, hamsters, gerbils, guinea pigs, ferrets, turtles, tortoises, hermit crabs, and birds are normally purchased through pet stores would be part of the exception. As you go into B, it would be goldfish and aquarium fish. Three would be non-venomous snakes less than eight feet in length. And number four, domestic hedgehogs, chinchillas, rabbits, mice, rats, which have been bred in captivity and have never known the wild. So that would be the alternative in terms of flexibility. And I think Becky is probably the best to speak to why we have no changes recommended yet, at the same time, what she may glean in terms of what this exception might bring. So Becky?
Welcome. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. If you have any questions, please go ahead. But I would like to say a few things. I have met with Ms. Davis. I understand how she feels about a pet hedgehog. And while it may seem like that's just a little hedgehog, it's a bigger picture. And having been with the city for over 35 years, and having worked very closely with the, there were seven jurisdictions in the 1990s who worked very closely because of the influx of, we were getting animals, we didn't even know what they were. It was before the internet. We had to run around and find out how to take care of them, how to feed them, what were they? Were they, could they make us sick? I mean, it was quite an effort back then to take care of that problem. And it worked. It cut down on the pet trade. I mean, I myself went undercover out to the reptile shows and the shows they hold at Dulles Expo, these pet expos, and they were selling what we call pocket pets, and sugar gliders, chinchillas. These little animals were sold to people on a whim. They didn't know what, how to take care of them, what they were, if they could get sick from them. So those animals were coming into all of our shelters. Now, we speed ahead. I'm a dinosaur in the business. Most of the people that worked on that project are gone. So we have a whole new group of animal control people coming in, and they're ready to reinvent the wheel. And my fear is they're going to open a Pandora's box, because like I said, it's just a little hedgehog. However, you'd be surprised the phone calls my office receives. You know, can I have a pet cougar? Can I have a kinkajew? Can I have a wallaby? That's a regular thing in animal control. So a hedgehog might be a little thing, but I really hate to see that work go for nothing. In the case of Arlington County, Arlington County just changed that code two years ago. They had nothing on the books. There are people in Arlington with chimpanzees. We do not want that here. Fairfax County, the last two years. So we don't know, there hasn't been enough time to see what that's going to mean. In other words, there hasn't been time for those animals to start showing up in the shelters again. But I believe they will. So that's my piece. Do you have any questions? Or?
Any questions? Vice Mayor Connelly?
Thank you for that. My question to you, Officer Keenan, is just, what happens to the Falls Church animals when they, is the shelter that they gets into in Arlington?
Yes. We contract with Animal Welfare League of Arlington.
Not in your home anymore? They don't go to your house anymore? Or do they sometimes?
Some do.
They do?
Many, over the years.
Yes, yes. But typically, they would go to Arlington. And Arlington has protocols in place for these particular animals?
We do the best we can most of the time. There's a lot of rescues now that take them. We have a reptile center in Lou Ray that takes them. We have different rescues that will help us. But the, there's not that many coming in right now, which is a good thing, because of these laws in place. I think that will change. Now, in Arlington, their laws are different than ours. They're a bigger county. And again, Arlington and Fairfax have changed, but Fairfax City hasn't, the town of Vienna hasn't, Prince William County has not, Manassas, Manassas Park. We all still have a basic exotic law on the books. So, but yeah, they go to Arlington, and then we decide where they go.
And then why did you recommend to take lizards out if we decided to go with the alternative language?
How do I say this? I've chased many four-foot iguanas around the city that are loose in trees all summer long. These animals, we find them, they're gray, they're dying, they're in the cold, they've been released. Having chased a monitor lizard in my career, I just don't think in the city, there's a place for four-foot lizards to... Now, there may be many lizards in people's houses we don't know about. It's the ones that I see, the downside, the ones that no one wants. So we left the lizards. There's also a higher incidence of salmonella with iguanas, and monitor lizards are a whole different ballgame. But that's why that's left out.
Duncan? Excuse me. Could you go back and repeat what you said about jurisdictions around us that have not gone the route of Arlington and Fairfax and have retained exotic animals ordinance that's similar to ours?
City of Fairfax, town of Vienna, Prince William County, city of Manassas, Manassas Park have not changed.
And based on your experience, have they had discussions of the sort that we're having here and chosen not to change, or has it just not come up there?
I think it probably hasn't come up. It may have. I might not be aware of it. But I know the difference between us and Arlington County, and this is very important. In Arlington County, their animal control is one of two in this area that are nonprofits. In other words, they're not a government entity. They're contracted. Animal control, the laws are written by the health department. And I was involved in the meetings in Arlington, and it became very, very interesting, because the people that showed up at those meetings were people selling the animals on the internet, exotic veterinarians. Most of the people that came in and wanted that law changed have a monetary stake in it. So when you see a whole row of people fighting with animal control because they're selling these things on the internet, it's a money. It's all money. It's not about where's the animal going, who's going to take care of it. But Arlington and Alexandria is another nonprofit. Their health departments make the laws. And there really should be people involved in law enforcement that are dealing with these animals. So that's kind of the difference between us and them.
Okay. Well, I want to hear what my colleagues think about this issue. But before I stop at this juncture, I just want to say that I appreciate your long service to the community. Although I'm not the longest-tenured council member, I think I am the longest-tenured resident. And going back to, quite a while back, on numerous occasions in our house, you and the police department have responded to situations, raccoons that were disabled and potentially, you know, rabid, other animal situations, even as recently as today. My in-laws, you know, a disabled crow turned up on their doorstep and, you know, called the police, and you all are out there and responding. And, you know, that is what, to me, small-town community is all about. And so I just want to, apart from all of this, thank you for your dedication and your efforts, and appreciate your understanding that this is, this is a difficult issue. I mean, it seems a little quixotic to some people who just, you know, maybe read about it in the newspaper, but it's a serious issue involving, you know, citizens and their rights and opportunities, and animals and their rights and opportunities. So we appreciate the time that you've spent getting us up to speed here. And as I say, I'd like to hear what my other colleagues think about this issue.
Okay. You still don't have that pet cougar anymore, do you?
We actually had a tiger here in the city a few years ago, so I don't, I'm not surprised. And if I could, pardon me for being out of order. One other thing I want you all to think about, with my tenure at Falls Church, we've always, we've been a green city, a tree city, a wildlife-habitat city. We've been all about the environment. But we're about to open a can of worms where it may not seem like a little hedgehog is a problem, but we're going to open our city to invasive species again. And that could eventually be a problem. I probably won't be around to see it, but it just sends a message, so.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. So if I recall, the first ordinance that George Washington ever voted on... So, if I recall, the first ordinance that George Washington ever voted on or supported was one keeping hogs in the streets of Fredericksburg. So, these issues have been around a very long time. So, a couple of things. I wanted to go back to what the chief indicated a minute ago. Is she indicating that she thinks that this proposed language that we have in front of us is a reasonable compromise? Did I hear you right on that? And the...
As I recall, in the last council meeting, you had requested that there be flexibility in the code. Now, if it's not that you take the recommendation that no, there are no changes, the next best thing in terms of flexibility would be the code that we presented before, starting on line 70.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Because that was your request.
Right. So, am I hearing, what's your view of that?
Well, after speaking with Becky and Carol and Wyatt, the best recommendation in terms of flexibility would be what is printed there.
Oh, we got it. Okay, thanks, thanks.
But your recommendation is to not, you do that, to have no change, is that right?
Correct.
So, if you're going to change, this is what you want, but your recommendation is no change, just to be clear?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so, that clarified it. So, I have a couple of reactions. I think, first of all, we've had our citizens, a lot of them come before us again tonight and make a request. I think to get a community really focused on this and community, I'll support the proposed compromise in, for first reading. Secondly, and this is the thing that really carried it over for me, the existing law permits the keeping of rats, and yet, we don't, hedgehogs and chinchillas, really? So, I just, I think the existing ordinance needs work, and it seems to me, I'm willing to go with the flexibility that's proposed here. And I, we always have the ability to come back and change the code if there get to be unexpected problems. I respect very much your work. But we have a lot of citizens who want us to take a serious look at this, and I think the way we get a community debate is to move forward on first reading. And the other thing is, I think we have a reasonable compromise to move forward on. So, again, thank you very much for your work. It's not at all a negative toward you, it's just the sense that, that things have evolved in a way that this might be acceptable and workable in a way that they weren't in the past, so.
If I could, Mr. Snyder, I just wanted to advise you, the reason rats are in there is because rats are food. And we allow people to have snakes, and a lot of people feed their snakes live rats. So, we couldn't cut off the food source, which might sound really scary, but that's something that happens, so.
Yeah, we ought to qualify the rats. But in any event, if we're permitting snakes and rats, it's a little hard for me to figure out why we can't permit hedgehogs and chinchillas. So, that's kind of where I come down on it. So, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy, then, Mr. Lipton House?
Great. Officer Keenan, first of all, as a fellow animal lover, thank you for your many years of service to the city and your perspective. As someone who also really thinks through kind of unintended consequences, I really appreciate your comments about making sure we think through this thoroughly. So, I appreciate kind of your perspective on that. Having read through the Fairfax County report, which was very thorough, and I note that they were, in fact, much, much bigger than us and obviously have a lot more resources, so they contacted biologists and various agencies, their health department, I thought their staff report was rather compelling in terms of why it made sense to update the code. Because back in the 90s, as you noted, while things were different back then, you know, a lot of these animals are more commonplace now, care of them, is it more common? And so, I thought the argument both presented by our citizens tonight, as well as the Fairfax County report, was pretty compelling in terms of updating the change. So, I, like Mr. Snyder, am prepared to support the revised ordinance. I think that it's, I'm all about consistency. So, I think I trust that with Arlington and Fairfax having updated this, while a bunch of the smaller jurisdictions haven't gone there yet, I trust that they've also invested a lot of time thinking through this, heard from likely just as many citizens as well. So, I think it's appropriate for us to be responsive to that. Thank you.
St. Lipton House?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Becky. I just, Isabel, you and the rest of your group, your grassroots movement, I want to tell you, it's impressive. I have three daughters myself, and I hope one day they can be as passionate about this over such a long period of time as they are about anything. It really is impressive. I think you could reuse all of your research for a PhD thesis at some point and sail right on through. I will say, I am fully in support of this resolution. I may actually be even a little more progressive when it comes to animal ordinances. And certainly appreciate staff comments as it relates to this. But, you know, part of the issue that I have is that, in terms of support for outlawing or restricting some of these animals, whether it's disease, sickness, it's abuse, you know, someone that's grown up around farms, worked on farms, I've worked on chicken farms, dairy farms, I've raised and lived with or handled every single animal that we have on this ordinance, whether they've been outlawed or not. I've birthed live calves with my bare hands before, and I can tell you, I have never, once in my life, ever gotten sick or known anybody that's gotten sick from handling these types of animals. And so, I think it is a small change in the ordinance, but I think it's an important one, and it's one that I see, frankly, no downside, or at least no downside greater than some of the Pandora's Box that may be opened by allowing us to domesticate dogs and animals, or, I'm sorry, dogs and cats, as well as other animals that are listed as acceptable in this particular ordinance. I think one of the best things that we can do are get our kids closer to nature in a practical and common sense way, and this is a way that I think that we can move a little bit closer to that. And when it comes to monetizing, or when it comes to abuse, there is, you know, there's obviously no place for that in our society. But one of the best things we can do are educate people on how to raise animals humanely. And I think you can see areas of abuse with all sorts of animals. I have certainly seen it, and I've seen it firsthand, and it's completely unacceptable. But that doesn't mean that we should restrict the use for folks that are going to raise them humanely, raise them as companions, raise them as pets. And so, I fully support this resolution for many reasons. And again, Isabel, you and your group here, I commend you for the effort that you've made. I mean, this is, we talk a lot about little city efforts and small-town community and culture. This is a great example of that, getting behind something that you care about and making a difference, and certainly convincing me, this was not even on my radar, to be honest with you. I had no idea that you couldn't have hermit crabs. We probably violated that law three or four times over in my house. But I think it's important that you guys have raised issues. You know, I fully support this resolution for many reasons. So, I thank everybody for their participation, both on staff and the community side. But again, I'm fully in support of this.
All right. Any other comments on this side of the table? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Chief Cavan, the other jurisdictions that were mentioned, Fairfax City, town of Vienna, Manassas Park, I'm struck by the fact that, you know, usually, when we're talking about things here on city council, you know, like the budget or taxes or whatever, we don't compare ourselves to Arlington and Fairfax because they're so much bigger. We sort of take, you know, the example of what the smaller jurisdictions do. Is there anything about the enforcement or regulating of exotic animals that puts a unique burden on smaller jurisdictions, as far as you know? Or is it really just the case that they just haven't gotten around to, you know, talking about this, and when they do, they will see the light and change just as Fairfax and Arlington have?
It did put a burden in the 90s. It was quite a burden on all of us, trying to figure out what to do with these animals. It was a constant juggling, trying to find rescues who would take them, how to care for them, and that's why the laws were written the way they were in the 90s. And it worked. The animal, the pocket pet train, as we called it, just completely slowed down. And we, all of us noted at the time that it, within two years, everything had slowed down. We were not getting the animals in. What we tried to do worked. And when we went to these pet shows and we saw what was happening, it's like the underbelly of the pet world. These animals are bred for money, and they're bred to death in a lot of cases, just like you hear about puppy mills and such. It's the same thing at these pet shows and these internet, I mean, you're buying a living creature over the internet. And a lot of times, it's a whim, you know? And so, by doing what we did in the 90s, it cut the burden immensely. And it cut the amount of animals that went home with me because no one else wanted them, so.
Okay. Thank you for that response. So, I think my question is going to be to staff as we, it sounds like, move forward on this. Is there any kind of, I'm not wanting something as strong as a sunset provision, but is there some sort of provision, language that we can include in the resolution that, you know, takes a look at the impact of this change a year or two years in, whatever amount of time seems like sufficient time to find out if, in fact, we have introduced an unintended consequence, and it is expensive, and it is time-consuming, and it is something that, you know, upon further reflection, might cause us to change our mind? I don't, I don't recall us having put that kind of language in an ordinance, but if the city attorney could just think about that, and maybe before we come back to this the next time, I would, I would like to see that. That would make at least me feel more comfortable. You know, it's obvious that Isabel and her friends have done a spectacular job of researching and advocating. I mean, this is, this really does need to be a case study in civic engagement by young people. Very impressive. And I want to be respectful of that as well. And I also must disclose, as I asked the city attorney, do I have a conflict of interest on this issue? Because I am, I confess, the holder of two hermit crabs, who are the best-treated hermit crabs in the Western Hemisphere. My daughter got them when she graduated from high school in 2011. So, actually, she got two, one died a little bit later, but then she picked up another from a friend of hers. So, Sprocket and Squeegee are now going strong in a temperature and humidity-controlled tank, which I'm kind of fearful to say is evidently against the law. I've housed that for sugar gliders. I know, there's no police here, yeah, really. I mean, I've housed that for sugar gliders and lizards, which leads me to, you know, the conclusion that I feel like we need to vote for this and advance it because there is something to be said for, you know, these animals being cared for and the anxiety that people might have about holding animals that they feel like they can't bring to the vet because they might get arrested or whatever. I feel like there's at least as much danger of that as there is of some of these other consequences that we, that we have talked about, which are, you know, possible too. At any rate, the city attorney says that I can vote on this because I have no financial interest, I'm not a trader, and I'm serious about this. This is the kind of stuff you stay up at night worrying about. This will be, this can and will be used against you in a campaign, I can tell you. I have no financial interest, I'm not a hermit crab trader. And a lot of hermit crabs meet a very unfortunate and untimely end. If anybody's gone to the beach and bought a hermit crab, sometimes they don't even make it across the Bay Bridge. But it is possible to care for these animals over the long term and for them to be, you know, important parts of your household, like you, Isabel, talk about, you know, some of the animals that you're interested in, particularly hedgehogs. My daughter's in graduate school in California now, but I'm still taking care of the crabs, so I'm gonna, I want to support this going forward. But I would feel better if we did have a little bit more opportunity a year from now to ask, you know, wow, did these Arlington and Fairfax people kind of get loose and do something that they hadn't intended? The advantage of the internet now is that there's a lot more communication, there's a lot more awareness of this, a lot more information about how to treat animals than I think there was in the 1990s. And there are more rescue and, you know, volunteer groups that step in and help where, you know, you used to pretty much have to take everything home because that's the way it was in the 90s. At any rate, that's my request, I guess, of staff. And I think I'm going to go ahead and support putting this on for first reading if we could just have a little discussion about some kind of language that would give us a look back a year or so from now. Thank you.
All right. Before I say my piece, I want to open this up to public comment. I know a lot of folks have spoken previously, but technically, I need to go ahead and open it up once again to public comment. So, any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter's closed to the public. I'm going to support this on first reading to advance it as well, but I do have some concerns. I am sympathetic to staff's position. And I would note, too, that just because we can't have dominion over animals, it doesn't mean we have to. You know, that not every living thing needs to be owned by a human. And so, I do have some concerns in some regards as to what kind of pets and animals we keep ourselves. But that being said, this is a fairly limited range of animals and pets as compromised language. But it is something I do want to give a little more thought to. But I would like to say unequivocally that I'm very proud of not just Isabel, but everybody in this room for your involvement in civic engagement, and this is really what democracy and small-town is really all about. And so, I think it's very heartening, I think, to all of us on council that there's so many people here tonight, and you've got such cool T-shirts on. But, so, I am going to, again, support the, support the motion, but I'm going to also give it some consideration between now and second reading. So, that's all I've got. Is there anything else anybody wants to say, or should we go ahead and go to a motion? Do we have a motion on the table?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant first reading to TO 1907, schedule a public hearing and second reading for June 24, 2019, and advertise the same according to law.
And that is the compromised language?
Yes, that is the language on page three of our staff report.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lipton House?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, counsel.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, all right. So, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk, will you call?
TR 19-22 is a resolution in support of a special session of the Virginia General Assembly for the purpose of addressing gun violence in the Commonwealth.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. Mr. Shields, would you like to give us a little information? I know this emanated from council, but maybe you could handle what's, a brief summary of what's in the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. And I would just start my remarks with a statement of solidarity with Virginia Beach. These are our colleagues. The shooting that occurred there just about 10 days ago really did hit close to home. These are our colleagues and friends and peers. And so, our thoughts have gone out to them. Our conference, actually, the local government managers' conference next week is, will be in Virginia Beach. And so, all the city managers and county executives will be there to show their support to Virginia Beach in person at that time. The governor has called for a special session of the General Assembly to take up gun safety legislation. The mayor contacted me to request that the council have an opportunity to speak on this issue and perhaps communicate its views to the General Assembly in light of this pending special session. And so, we've prepared a draft that reflects, A, a compilation of past positions by the city council that have been adopted as part of your legislative program, as well as just a reading of what the governor and members of the General Assembly have indicated they believe will be on the agenda for discussion. And so, specifically, what we've listed in the resolution, in the whereases of measures to address gun violence, some of the measures that the council will be expressing support for in this draft resolution would be the universal background checks, a requirement that people report lost or stolen firearms, the red flag measures to permit police or family members to petition a state court to order the temporary removal of firearms from a person who may present a danger to others or themselves, three, enabling local governments to prohibit dangerous weapons in libraries, recreation centers, and government buildings, four, reinstatement of the one-gun-a-month limit on handgun purchases, that was the law of Virginia about 10 years ago, and five, banning assault weapons and related devices, including sound suppressors, like the one that was legally, the device that was legally bought and used by the gunman in Virginia Beach. So, those are the listed policy items that are in the resolution. So, that's a quick staff report on this, on this item. We'd be happy to take any further council direction on this resolution, and I'll stop the report there.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any?
I got a question.
Of course.
Yeah. I think Ms. Hardy had requested this. Was there, I didn't see any comments in here on addressing mental health issues? I think that was a request that came in.
Funding for mental health?
Yeah, support increased funding for mental health programs.
Did I miss that?
It is not. I think we got that after the packet had been, so I should have noted that in the staff report.
Just clarification for anybody that's got inside-baseball knowledge on this, in number five, I guess line 65, in terms of banning assault weapons and related number five, I guess line 65, in terms of banning assault weapons and related devices, is there anything more prescriptive related to that that was included? Like class III firearms, anything? Anybody have any knowledge of what's being proposed on state floor? Nope. Okay. I'd be curious to know what that is. I think they could be much more prescriptive.
Other comments?
Question.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Do the related devices include bump stocks? Is that, that's a related device?
Yeah, those are banned federally, but.
Oh, they're federally banned. Okay, we're done with that.
The more prescriptive they can be, the better. But again, I know it's just now unfolding, so.
I think it would be similar to our legislative program in that this would then form a basis for our communications to our elected General Assembly members, to our delegation.
We'd go to the delegation. I'd also recommend we send it directly to the administration as well as VML and VACO, so they have the information about the city's position. And for the resolution and a little bit about Councilman Lickenhouse's point, you want it specific here, but not too specific, because when things unfold during the General Assembly, I want to be able to be responsive to some subsets, but I don't know exactly what the governor might propose yet.
Yeah. I'm sure that they'll get specific about class III and other things that are much more specific than just general banning of assault weapons and suppressors. They're just, they go by other names, but I know that it'll, it'll unfold.
Mr. Snyder?
This is way overdue. Tragically, what happened in Virginia Beach was entirely predictable based upon the virtually unlimited access to incredible firepower. It's about time we get going to effectively address this, and I fully support this. I think the five measures are the least of what we ought to do. And hopefully, if there's something more aggressive, I think as Councilmember Lickenhouse suggested, certainly that isn't precluded by this resolution. But I think it's very important to do this, and I have my full support.
Right. Any other?
Sorry, one last question. Cindy, so for whoever is following this at the legislative level, any conversations related to gun show loopholes? I mean, universal background checks, I know where those things touch on that, but in terms of transacting firearms?
I have not heard anything directly yet from the administration and what might get put in. I'll defer to the chief if she's heard anything through her field. That's come up in the past and usually so far, but I think there's a different discussion, at least will be had. So we'll monitor it.
That falls under the umbrella of the universal background checks?
All right. Other comments? Does any member of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing, okay. Seeing none. There's the public looking up. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Any other comments, or do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I would just note, if you're going to make the motion with the additional mental health item, note that, add that in.
Got it.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I move to adopt TR 19-22 with the modifications as we discussed.
Second.
Right. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right. Let's keep trucking. And the next items, I think, are consent agenda. So does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, yes. I'd like a more thorough discussion about what we're doing here, the precedent for it, and the legality of it.
All right. Shields?
So the item that's been pulled from a consent is authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract in an amount up to 15 million to Falls Church Gateway Partnership Public Infrastructure LLC for the West Falls Church and Joint Campus Revitalization District Multimodal Transportation Project. And what this refers to is the, the city has been allocated $15.7 million through the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority for multimodal improvements at the West Falls Church campus site. So specifically, what is envisioned in the scope of work is the pedestrian facilities along the perimeter of the project, along Route 7 and Haycock Road, increased, some traffic controls, traffic signals to help with egress into the site and out of the site, traffic controls to help with school access in and out of the site, the undergrounding of utilities to the extent that they interfere with the pedestrian facilities along Route 7 and Haycock. That's the scope of work that was part of the original grant application. And since that allocation has been made by the NVTA, we've had several meetings with the NVTA staff just to clarify and refine that scope, and it is aligned with what our original application was. We just want to make sure they understand our scope and that, that they've approved that scope, which they have. We've also run this agreement through the NVTA staff. And what the special condition was that in light of the city entering into a comprehensive agreement with the development team, that we believe that in order to create the greatest value for the tax dollar, as well as to have the sort of the most seamless coordination of these improvements, along with the other 40-odd million dollars of infrastructure improvements that the developer is paying for on the site, that it was most efficient for them to be the general contractor for this work. The NVTA has concurred with that view and has, would allow this contract. So what we have been then working through is the details of, of how this, these funds would be administered between the city and Falls Church Gateway Partners. And that's what this agreement would allow us to do then, is just memorialize the, sort of the nuts and bolts of how invoicing would occur, the lines of accountability. There's also a measure in there that we will be using a portion of the grant funds for the administration of the grant itself and for the city to have project management. This is the largest transportation grant that the city has ever received, or at least in, in recent history. And we do need to make sure that we staff it and resource the administration of it properly. And we would use a portion of the grant funds for that purpose as well. So that's a summary, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Right. Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a lot. This seems like it's a, at least on the surface, looks like a gift to the developer. And I, what competence do they have at transportation planning? This is a, an intersection that clearly this grant is intended to support that project in part, but only in part. I've never seen anything like this. Is there any precedent for the city getting a transportation grant and then turning it over to a developer? I'm, I'm not aware of that.
So we would turn it over.
Questions about how we manage this. And is the, is the contract available for review? And how do we, you know, how do we, how do we know that we're going to have control over this? And, and more importantly, it just seems like we're adding yet one more thing to give to the developer on this project. So explain to me why we should do this again.
So typically, really, the only, the only difference is that typically what one would do in, in a situation like this is put it out to, you know, through a request for proposals or invitation to bid for the work.
To a, a transportation expert company, you would never put it out to bid to somebody else, right? Assuming.
To, to a general contractor, yes.
Right. General contractor with transportation experience.
That's right.
Right.
So what the, because the development team is, is doing so much other infrastructure work already, there is a great deal of interaction that has to happen between this work and, and the site work for, for the development. And so what, what EYA is going to really be doing is, is managing sort of the workflow. They will have to competitively bid the work themselves. And they'll have to demonstrate in their invoices what that bidding process was and how they chose the subs that will do the actual work on the ground.
But they take a profit for their oversight of this. So we're, the city takes $700,000, and then the developer is going to take a profit, and then it goes to the subs that'll do the work, and they'll take a profit.
And that's, that would be true for any kind of a general contracting relationship. So yes, there is a fee that the developer would be paid for in this agreement. And so the fee structure is basically a six-six-and-two structure of a 6% fee, 6% overhead, and, and 2%. I'm drawing a blank on what the last one is. It's a, it comes to a total of a 14% fee. So that was, that has been discussed with NVTA as well. And, and what their test is, is it within the bounds of what's normal for the industry? And that is a normal management fee for general contracting work.
Mr. Shields, so the argument for this is that because they're doing other infrastructure work by sharing this grant with them, that they get more efficiency?
That's correct.
Do we know, like, can we quantify? Like, do we get another sidewalk because we're doing this? Like, what's the, what's the efficiency argument?
Well, a lot of it is just in terms of delivering the work in a, in a coordinated fashion. So the alternative is for the city to contract this out directly. But then we would need to spend a great deal of time to have our schedules line up with their schedules, make sure that our work doesn't get out of sequence and then have to be undone because of the contractor's work. So having unified contract management is sort of intrinsically, that's the value of, of doing it this way.
Maybe separate from kind of how the contracts work is, what sort of oversight do we have on these transportation improvements? Outside of the money, you know, what sort of relationship will we have in approving the transportation improvements, having a role in designing them? Just to address, I think, Mr. Snyder's concerns, that we, you know, we don't want to spot at the table to make sure these aren't done, kind of, we don't just give them money and then they go off and do what they think is best.
Sure, absolutely. So this is a reimbursement grant. So everything, every dollar they get first has to be properly documented. It would come to the city. We would review all of their documentation. Once it's submitted in a form that we find to be acceptable, then we forward that on to the NVTA. The NVTA reimburses the city, and then the city pays the contractor. And so that's the way we would do it in any kind of a general contracting experience. In this instance, the, the general contractor is, is the developer.
And I would note that this is the contractor doing the construction. The city's still at the table in terms of the design, integration into our plans, streets, gates. So all of the policy guidance that council's already adopted is part of the scope and implementation of this project as well.
So the design of any of these transportation improvements, clearly we have a role, we have a big role in because it's still something that goes through our city processes.
We do, and VDOT does. And the Fairfax County Department of Transportation has been involved in this as well, just from a, a general interest perspective. But VDOT would be the regulating authority for, particularly for everything along Route 7. One other aspect of this is that the developer is responsible for all the infrastructure on the site. When they gave their financial offer, it was known at that, that time that this grant was available for these types of improvements. The scope was known. It was a public document. And we had shared that information with the two bidders at that time. And then as we went through the, the negotiations with the, the final developer, they were sort of building into their offer price the assumption that, you know, that these types of improvements, mainly that the pedestrian and vehicular access to and from the site would be, was within the scope of this grant. One other aspect of it that I think is a, and then sort of a built-in incentive for these funds to be used effectively by this contractor is that they are responsible for all of the infrastructure in the site. So the extent that they use this money inefficiently, they make up the difference. And that's, that's unique in contracting. And that's actually helpful, and I think in terms of ensuring that the public gets the value for these, for these grants, tax dollars, because of that structure. But in, in addition to that sort of natural incentive, we will do our, administer this contract with, with a great deal of oversight. And we are very desirous to have a positive relationship with NVTA. And if they have any problems with anything we're submitting, we're going to be very aggressive in, in rectifying it or getting to the bottom of it.
It may be useful to know that the, the contract process for this was, this was not a specific contract. This was done through the purchasing office, just as our standard procurement is done. The one difference was that the developer was found to be the best practicable source because they would be using this in the end, and they would have to tie it into what they're going to do in the future on the site. And that is why they were selected. But then we started with a procurement contract, and there were some negotiations, as there always are. But this is not like a specific agreement for them.
So I have a follow-up question. How do we know the money of this, that's part of this grant is going to be spent for grant, for the grant-related purposes and isn't used for what the developer ought to be paying for? How are we going to establish that?
We'll be monitoring their work. Ultimately, we'll have to accept their work. We'll be inspecting their work, and we'll be tying the, those inspections to the invoices they submit.
And it has to be consistent with the scope of the grant. So it's very narrow in the geographic area. And besides the city monitoring it, of course, NVTA will be monitoring us.
Yeah. So my, yeah, my recollection, we went through the bidding process, is that this $15.7 million NVTA grant was an assumption in the underwriting, specific to the deals. So my understanding was it was, the bids were dependent upon this assumption. Could be wrong, but that's what I remember. The second is, I actually would prefer that the developer take this on as opposed to having a third party that is not fully integrated and immersed in that project. One, to reduce delays and risk, but also because there should be some cost efficiency. With that being said, as long as we have appropriate leverage over the scope of the project itself, understanding exactly what we expect to come out of it, and if it's going through the same planning process, permitting process, and oversight from the city to make sure we get exactly what we expect, and we've got that, that leverage over the development proceeding itself, then I'm, then I'm fine with that.
I've got a question or two for you. So I'm trying to figure out how this is going to be documented. Like, in other words, well, that's their responsibility to do everything. And how is that articulated? Through the S E E, the S E, is there some other document that says you're going to do, you know, 180 linear feet of underground, put it in four-inch conduit and whatever? Is there like a scope of work with specs that we are giving to them, saying this is what you need to do for this amount of money? How's that being articulated?
Are you saying that specifically for this grant? Or just in general?
This grant. So for example, first off, I guess even taking a step back, who determines the scope of work? Like, what is this grant? We want to have a, you know, fancy, whatever it's called, stoplight. We want two, three sensors with 180-degree scope, and we want a, you know, thermoplast, whatever. Who's determining the scope of work that we're going to say to them, you need to do this?
So the scope, the scope is defined by the grant application and NVTA's approval of that grant application.
So the scope of work's already been determined?
Yes.
In detail?
No, at a pretty high level.
So how does the detailed scope of work come about? Like, in other words, someone says you're going to reduce traffic, or you're going to do whatever. Like, how do we come up with the, you know, the detailed scope of work you're going to attach to a contract, for example? You're going to put it in four-inch conduit, you're going to bury it, you know, minimum four feet, you're going to, whatever it is. Where's that coming from?
Well, do you want to speak to us, Cindy?
Initial details will, of course, be compliance with any county, city policies, VDOT in the county. As it gets down to the detailed design like that, that would be developed by the contractor and then comes into the normal city approval process. It'll be a very iterative piece because we're going to be very specific on our streets, gates. We have conduit standards. We know what the traffic signals, poles are going to be. So all of that is built into it. And then as we go through the site plan and this project's specific processes, it'll be rolled in with city's approvals.
It seems like that ought to be coming from us, not from the developer. In other words, we want you to put in. In other words, we want you to put in whatever it is. Like, here's the specs for the intersection.
Yes, we're providing the specs.
So we are providing the specs? Plans and specs?
Sort of general specs.
And they'll do the designs.
But no, I mean, if we were bidding this work out, we wouldn't, we wouldn't design it down to every detail. We'd have the general contractor come, you know, we would lay out, here's the work that we need to have done. We want a signalized intersection here. Here's the concept plan. And they would then develop all of the shop drawings and the specs for the work, and they would bid it out to the subs and get the work done and submit for reimbursement for it.
But, I mean, for what, we've already got a stoplight there, right? So we're trying to articulate something different than's already there, right? We're going to upgrade the intersection. I don't know what that means, really, how to upgrade the intersection. How do we articulate to the developer what upgrade we want? Were you asking them, hey, tell us how to upgrade this intersection? Or are we saying to the developer, we want you to upgrade this intersection by putting sensors on each of the mastheads to determine, you know, the stacking that's occurring? We want you to put in, who's telling whom what the upgrades of this intersection are going to be?
So they will be going through, in the SESP, they'll be doing the engineering for the intersection. The VDOT will have probably the greatest say in exactly the specs of how that intersection is designed. There will be some iterations on that. The city will be pushing for walkability, probably, you know, predictably probably more than VDOT will be. And so that will be some of the push-pull of the grant in terms of what the final design would be.
So who's determining what the goals are? In other words, the goals are to reduce stacking at this intersection by 20%? Or do we have goals?
Yeah, I mean, VDOT's going to do level of service analysis for any changes we make onto Route 7. And so they would, they will lay out goals in terms of what the throughput will be.
So we don't have any goals yet?
Because it's Route 7 and it's not really in the city, we're going to be an applicant, really, for these, for these traffic controls, and VDOT's going to review them and ultimately approve them.
And I guess, to my mind, we ought to be an active participant?
We will, I mean, we're going to be the initiator, but VDOT is going to be the approver.
What have we given as articulated goals then if we're the?
So will we lay out exactly what level of service the goals are? I think it's probably going to be VDOT that's going to say that.
So what are we going to actively?
Well, you know, level D service is probably, you know, the city doesn't use those level services all that frequently, but that, that is likely to be, you know, where we would be. Level E, I'm sorry. The-
I guess for me, what, I guess I'm just trying to convey, at least from my own interest, is I imagine we have our own interest in this intersection, the things we want to accomplish. We want to have it more pedestrian-friendly. We want to get people on bikes and cars across the street. We want, whatever, slow down traffic, whatever. I don't even know what those goals are. But they may be in conflict with what VDOT wants, which is probably pull people 60 miles an hour in front of our site, getting them on the highways rapidly as they can. It's probably VDOT's interest, I would- So, given that the goal of this is to upgrade the intersection, right? It's not just to, you know, do a new intersection exactly the same. Me, that's of interest. What is it? What are the goals? You know, and so-
Right.
You're telling me VDOT's got their own interest, which I'm not sure what they are, and I'm trying to figure out what our interests are and how we can protect our interests in light of what-
Well, we will be the applicant, so we'll be the initiator, and VDOT will be the approver. I mean, that's-
And again, but we, again, don't have articulated goals, level of E service, LOSE, right?
Right, but we, I mean, what we're going to be putting forward are conceptual plans, and we'll all be looking at those. And so the level of our engagement is, what are the traffic movements? What we care about are the traffic movements. How are you getting into the site? It's the engineers and VDOT, they're going to be going into all, turning radiuses and stuff that they do, that they do for every intersection. And just to remember also, this isn't just one intersection. This is all of the access to the site. So the new intersection to access the commons, that's part of the scope of work for this, for this grant. The access, the hawk signal on Haycock, the streetscape improvements, those are all part of the scope.
I'm nearly done belaboring this point, but I would say that we ought to, to my mind, articulate what it is, not just a hawk signal. We want a hawk signal that, whatever. I don't know what you would say about a hawk signal. Or we want this amount of stacking, but no more than this stacking coming out of a project. And so there are sort of articulated goals.
Yeah, we would do that. You've, you're sort of catching me unprepared. I wasn't prepared for that type of discussion. But we have traffic engineers on the city staff that will, when they are going through the SESP, that's their job. But again, we're not going to be the final approval, approver on these things, A, because it's a grant for this work, and B, because much of this work is in VDOT's right of way.
All right, well, like I said, I'm going to stop just because, not because I feel like I'm satisfied, but just because I feel like I've taken up of everyone's time, and everyone's patient with me, so.
And I think council's comprehensive plan for mobility for all modes, as well as your streetscape and your bus shelter and your bike shelter, all of your policy documents will be part of the city's review and the concepts, as well as the engineering's design. And so the city will be at the table with your overarching goals that are already adopted.
Again, that sort of goes back to, we want a bus stop within 50 feet of this. We want another bus stop between 50 feet of that, which is sort of giving out some specs and things like that, as opposed to, tell us where you think a bus stop should be. I mean, I was thinking we'd have an active role in, you know, we want a bus stop here. We want whatever here along the way. And is that the case?
Yes, that's the case. It's similar to any land case that comes before the council, where you have, you know, the action or a site plan approval. Everything is laid out in that site plan. The case here, though, is, you know, we're not used to having as much interaction with VDOT as, and certainly having VDOT be the final approver, that will be a new process for us.
So here's my sense of unease about this, and let me try to be as clear as I can. So as opposed to a typical general, as opposed to a typical contract that you've let for transportation work, you go to the general contractor, and that general contractor works only for you. It's very clear what the interests of that contractor are. They're yours when you contract with them. What we're proposing here is a potential for conflict of interest between a developer with his own financial interests managing a contract. And the potential of conflict of interest is what bothers me here. It's not the typical situation. And is the developer going to, going to come up with a transportation plan that serves its particular interests, or our combined interests, or ours? And that's the difference here. The difference is, yes, you'd need a general contractor presumably, regardless of how you did it. You're arguing that, yes, you get efficiency by doing this. That's a good argument. My other one relates to governance, which is, we really run the risk of dealing with a situation where our general contractor potentially has a conflict of interest that doesn't exist in a typical procurement situation. That's my unease about this.
Great other comments? Questions? I mean, I think, obviously, this was discussed, or at least that's my recollections from the get-go, or at least from pretty early on, that this was, would be something that would be part of the package for any developer bidding on this. I think maybe it might behoove us to have some further discussion about the structure of it or the mechanics of it, so that we can feel more at ease with how this is all going to work out. But I think in general, it's already been articulated and laid out as part of our RFP process, or at least the latest RFP process. But I do sense, at least from some of us, that we would like to probably have a little bit more information so that we can have our fingers, you know, how this actually works in practice. That might be okay with you?
Yeah, that's right. And I do think that the SESP is really where all of these designs are going to be reviewed and ultimately approved by the city council. One thing that is of a time constraint is that the utility undergrounding work is scheduled for the summer. And so this, the NVTA is scheduled to take in action in mid-June to have these funds allocated in FY '20. And having this agreement in place is also necessary to allow that, that work to happen. After the utility undergrounding is completed, however, then the draws on this grant will actually really slow down for about 18 months, and probably more like for two years, while the high school gets built and until the rest of the development of the site happens. And so aside from the utility undergrounding, which is expensive, all of the transportation improvements, we have the next 18 months to work through all those details and to coordinate with her, with VDOT and with Fairfax County on those.
You'd like us to support this motion tonight, so you can get the undergrounding work done, but you will come back to us with additional details about how this will be implemented and-
Yes.
All right. With that, is there any further discussion that people want to have? All right, any member of the public wish to speak to this? Now, seeing none from you, I think we're done. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager, on behalf of the city, to award a contract in an amount up to $15 million to FCGP Public Infrastructure LLC for the West Falls Church and Joint Campus Revitalization District Multimodal Transportation Project.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
The clarification that it was FCGP.
Sorry, did I?
$15.3 million.
So it's up to 15.
Does? No, it's the 15.
Sorry, I was just reading the-
So the contract award with FCGP is for 15 million. $700,000 is our project budget allocated for city administration of the grant. That's kind of our outside budget estimate. We, if we use less than that, then we'll inform the council of that, and whatever we don't spend would be allocated for public improvements.
All right, let's go ahead and-
So Mayor Charter's reading from the-
Agenda.
Agenda. It says $15.3 million. On the motion, it says 15 million.
The motion is correct.
The motion is correct? Okay. So I'll second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Obstein.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
All right, is there any business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committee or council liaison reports? Council member comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I just want to give a hearty thank you and congratulations to everyone involved in the Tinnerhill Music Festival this weekend. It was a wonderful event. City staff worked so hard, volunteers worked so hard. The park was full all day long, people of all ages from the whole entire region. It was very well done and a great success. So congratulations to all who pulled that together. And thank you to city staff who worked a long day, or maybe longer than a day, more than a day. And I also want to mention that the groundbreaking for the George Mason High School is this Friday at 2:00 p.m., and Mayor Charter will be speaking. And last thing is, go out and vote tomorrow.
All right, we've got some, unless we have some additional comments? We have some minutes to approve? Mr. Duncan? Plus them?
Anyone else?
Okay. The minutes of Monday, July 23, 2018. Line 51, I think that is provided and update.
Can't leave during this, Mr. Benton.
And line 102-
Can't leave, this is important.
Is, as well as future neighboring development projects, I think as wants to be there. With those two corrections, move approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, July 23, 2018.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. How about next ones?
Okay, anybody else got anything on any of the next three?
I gave some comments to Ms. Prince already. Little typos.
Okay, well, in that case, I move on block approval of the minutes of the meeting, meetings of Monday, August 13, Tuesday, October 9, and Monday, October 22, 2018, as corrected by the vice mayor.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. Anything else we ought to be talking about tonight? All right, let's adjourn. Thank you.